Okay, welcome, everybody. We are now in general session. Let's start with Pledge of Allegiance.
We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Do we have a motion for the approval of the November 14 minutes? I'll make a motion.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And are there any questions that you want to ask for CSE or CPSE? If not, otherwise, do I have a motion to accept the report?
Make a motion.
Second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we are going to start the public comment session with the brass ensemble. Would you like to?
Yes, Ms. Bartlett. You want to have people introduce themselves?
Sure. I'll start over there with you guys introduce. Tell them who you are and what grade you're in.
I'm Doran Reinhardt, I'm a senior.
I'm Bailey Behrger, I'm a junior.
I'm Jordan Condon, I'm a senior.
I'm Lucas Fromran, and I'm sophomore.
And I'm Katie Brooks, and I'm a senior.
Want to tell them what you guys are playing?
Alright, so we are playing two songs tonight with very similar titles, but different melodies. First, we'll start off with Angels We Have Heard on High, and then we're going to do Hark The Herald Angels Sing. There we go.
I just have a quick question.
Yes, sir.
How long have you been playing the instrument that you're playing tonight?
Oh, I've been playing since fourth grade.
Fourth grade.
I think everyone's, yeah. Very long time.
Yep.
Very nice.
Awesome.
Thank you very much.
And guys, when's your concert? Your winner, remind everybody.
Fourteenth, next Thursday.
Six o'clock, right?
Six o'clock.
Great. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, now we will go into public comment, but how many students do we have here this evening for government? Could you please introduce yourselves?
Katie Brooks.
After.
Alright, well, thank you and welcome.
Make sure you get your paper signed before you leave.
Yeah. And does anybody have any public comment? Yes.
On the back. Alright. In case you don't remember last time, Beth P. Traul representing PTA, PTSA. We had a joint PTSA meeting tonight in the parent community coffee. We had a total eight or nine attendants. We discussed the school lighting to be held this Thursday. We are hoping to have a table set up, PTSA table, being able to hand out candy canes. We're going to try to be there prior to the concert. Bruce Becker was also there tonight. He discussed further information regarding the Leo's Club. I don't think a definite date set up for January, but he's going to do a presentation during school hours trying to get some students to join. Kind of do like, I think have a couple of the Leo members join him. Katie Cuomo joined Alliance Club, representing the Walton staff. And we did further discussion on our cornhole tournament, which is going to be held March 10th. Oh, back up to there, sorry about that. We're going to, we're trying to look into getting more students to join the PTSA committee, so we're going to ask some of the clubs like, to see if they would sponsor their $5 membership fee.
Oh, good.
So, we're working on that.
When did you say the cornhole?
March 10th? Five to nine here at the high school. I think we're going to have the cornhole in the big gym and then just an open volleyball in the middle school gym just for case some of our, don't want to do the cornhole, at least can play volleyball. So that's our plan and obviously looking into sponsorship or people to donate toward the first price, second place, third place, so.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're really trying to get that going underway and try to start advertising. I think it was January. January needs to start sending out flyers and hopefully get that up and going. Sounds like we have pretty good feedback from that. It sounds like a lot of people are excited, so.
Good.
And I think that's all we have for tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, any other public comment? Oh, we have another student. Could you introduce yourself?
Me, I'm Jordan Condon, you're close right here.
Thank you. Didn't want to leave anybody out. Alright, so possible discussion items. Does anybody have anything?
You want an update on facilities?
Yeah, if you want to go ahead with that, sure.
Alright. On November 28th, Facilities Committee met. We met with the BCA Architects and Engineering Company that has done a facility study on all our buildings. We discussed different topics with them. We decided to, basically, we're going to get together and do a walkthrough of the buildings on a weekend. That way, we're not interfering with any classes or we want to go locker rooms. Everything is just going to be exposed to us. We were figuring we would come up with a, kind of like a punch list and agenda or a prioritized list, and then we will share that with the entire board, a complete printout of the analysis that we've received from them and what we have come up with as a committee is where we think we ought to start. Then we can start the process of doing some maintenance because we definitely are in need of doing some maintenance, that's for sure.
Now, is that something that the whole board can join in on, a walkthrough? Just so we can, when you're talking about something, we could have a visual of what you're seeing as well?
We had quite a bit of discussions on different topics of that. One of the things we talked about, getting documentation and stuff, once we get kind of a, it's quite a document to go through everything. So we thought, once we got it down to our prioritized list, then we could do that.
Then do a walkthrough, okay.
And maybe do some community meetings, so the public, it wouldn't be just, this is, we're doing this. We could have some type of presentation put together. Those are just discussion items that we've had on that to kind of phase everybody into it. So it's not all of a sudden, we're just, you know, we're doing X, Y, and Z, but they would understand why and we could, it may be a PowerPoint presentation or some type of thing of that and go down that road. We touched on a lot of topics the other night, we just didn't really, this was kind of narrowed our pool down to try to pick the ones that we want to tackle.
I just think a visual helps with a degree of, you know, issue or damage or something.
And that was where the committee come from, with trying to take a report that someone else has generated for you and then try to put your priority to it, you know, without being able to see it and understanding the ins and outs of the complete report.
Right.
That's why we decided to, and we just ended up on a default on a weekend because of the availability of the school and not, like I said, it's pretty busy.
Right.
And interfering with classes or other things.
Alright.
So we'll have more to come in the near future. We're looking to try to have this done and really our list back together by January. I don't remember the exact date we picked, but it was a January date that we could have that back to the consultants and we'll get it prioritized and then start that.
Okay.
And I've asked the Facilities Committee and I think any of the board members, I know we've talked about it, visiting a couple of the school districts that invited us to see some of the capital project work that they've done. They've asked me to make the, I'll make some appointments and dates, send it back out to them. But the whole board's more than welcome to tour the two districts.
That'll be good.
To visit, just to get an idea.
Right.
Good.
Because then you might get somebody's horror stories or somebody's, if you will, an off-the-wall idea that turned out great.
Right.
I mean, it's just, so, in this situation, more information is usually better than that.
Alright, good, thank you. Does any veils have anything? Alright, I am going to touch on the legislative breakfast that Marilyn and I attended in SUNY Oneon on Saturday. I think it was, it was well-attended. The majority of the questions and concerns was to request the ability of New York State to provide districts with the flexibility in the use of categorical aid as well as providing schools with a three-to-five-year state aid projection. I don't know if that's going to happen, but they heard our concerns. Congressman Fassow and Senator Seward both acknowledged that schools need to have flexibility and to be able to use these funds where the district sees a need. Congressman Fassow addressed the increasing needs with mental health. The districts are not just dealing with student hunger, but mental health, drugs, alcohol, and homelessness. Senator Seward suggested schools focus on a school-based health center and should have foundation aid to help support this. He stated, "Students today are coming to school carrying a lot more baggage than they did years ago." And I know we had discussed that in the past about a school-based health center. He stated, "Currently, there are 22 school-based centers in his jurisdiction." So they're definitely growing. Congressman Fassow stated he was not a supporter of the proposed President's tax cuts and felt if a higher taxpayer leaves the state, it will impact us, pointing out that 80% of the tax revenue comes from 8% of the taxpayers. So that was the majority of it. There was a lot of good questions. Unfortunately, there was three of them. One of them left maybe, you know, before halfway through it. Yeah. And then, you know, it left the two to kind of battle with the, you know, the Senate and the Congress. But there was a lot of good points about the flexibility, that the schools truly need flexibility because not, it's not one-size-fits-all. Every district may have a different need and they should be able to use that aid as they see fit. So hopefully something will go there. I also want to share a compliment that came in from a member of the Walton Fire Department. This individual was at a fire call in close proximity to the elementary school when he noticed the elementary principal inquiring whether or not it was safe for the students to travel home on this particular street. The member felt it was evident that the principal truly cared for the students and their safety even after dismissal. So that was nice hearing about that and you never know, you know, when people are watching us. But it was very comforting. And don't forget, our board goals has been changed to January 17th. And the other date that came up was January 9th.
January 9th, you have a workshop scheduled, yeah.
We currently have that workshop scheduled and that should be right about the time that the RFPs are due back. Do we want to keep that workshop and maybe start reviewing them that evening?
It's a good use of time.
Okay, so if everybody's in agreement with that, then we'll keep that scheduled for a board workshop.
What was the date on that, Ron?
January 9th.
January 9th. And then the other board goals was the January 17th. And then also, Grayden and I are going to be, well, I don't know if you, you plan on still attending the webinar on December 12th? And I think that was all I had, yes. Okay, so we're up to correspondence and information.
I don't think we have any.
Um, do we want to address the, yeah, the LPN of this one? Okay. I'm going to read a statement that we have come to agreement with. "It has come to our attention that there are concerns with the Walton Central School District's decision to hire a licensed practical nurse to help meet our school healthcare needs. I would like to assure you, we have come to this decision after careful research and with the advice of legal counsel. Although a fully licensed registered nurse may have been preferable, after the district's application process, it was decided this candidate's strong rapport with students and staff and willingness to actively pursue her registered nurse license as well as presenting both the professional and personal qualifications the district was seeking, the superintendent's recommendation was presented to the board. Our school RN has agreed to provide the needed professional medical support to our LPN and the two work very well as they are in regular communication with each other. Our LPN is aware of her legal limitations and has assured us she will not violate her limitations. We have no desire to compromise our Walton School family or jeopardize our LPN's career by placing her in a situation that is outside her training or licensing. As we strive to remain in full compliance and continue to provide appropriate and timely healthcare for our students and staff, we will continue to support this position and the needs that may arise. I hope this addresses the concerns and please contact the superintendent should you desire more information." Okay. And if there's no other correspondence, presentations, fall sports.
You guys are stuck to me for this one. I promise that won't be too long. So I thought we'd start off with scholar athlete updates and as probably some of you are aware, New York State Public High School Athletic Association, two years ago, kind of changed the way we do scholar athletes. Years ago, it used to be 11. So if you have a football team of 35 kids, the top 11 kids, if their average is 90 or above, you know, so you have a lot to choose from. So last fall, they started, and I've explained this a couple of times, but it's 75% of your roster. So if your roster's 25 kids, now your top 18 has to average 90 or above. And I'm sure as most of you are, last year, we had 11 of our 12 varsity teams qualify and we were a school of distinction, one of six schools, and all of section four for that. So I'll start off with an update on our scholar athlete teams from the fall. So, and again, you know, you have to have a 90-year veteran average and 75% of your players. So varsity girls soccer team had the highest average, they were 95.33. They had 18 players that were 90 or above, so pretty phenomenal. The varsity boys soccer team had an average of 94.53. They had 16 players on their squad that were 90 or above. The field hockey team had an average of 93.64 and they had 14 players that had an average of 90 or above. The volleyball team had an average of 92.5 and they had seven players that had an average of 90 or above. Unfortunately, the football team did not qualify as a scholar athlete team. They were just below that threshold of 90 average. They did have 11 players that had a 90 or above average. And the nice thing New York State did was previously, those 11 football players that had a 90 or better average, they wouldn't get recognized. Now, any student athlete that has a 90 or above and is on a varsity roster gets a PIN and we hand those out at the end of the year athletic award ceremony. So, so we had 405, which still keeps us in line with that threshold of trying to stay at 75% or above for the school of distinction. So that was our fall scholar athlete update. We've, we've taken pictures and they'll be going on the website and out to the media pretty soon, so. So that's that. As far as, you know, it's interesting to talk to the fellow athletic directors and they talk about declining participation. Our modified numbers are as good as they've ever been and our coaches work great with those modified kids. And, you know, I was one of those modified coaches this year. It takes an interesting individual to run out with all these eager kids every day after school and spend bus rides on these, you know, very energetic kids, you know, going to, you know, faraway places. So all the modified JV teams, they all had great falls. I will give specifics on all the varsity level teams and how they, they finished. Ultimately, our varsity teams, we strive to, you know, do the best, win as many as we can. So the varsity football team unfortunately did not qualify for postseason play this year. They were relatively a young team at the start of the year and really had a great push at the end of the year. And some of those week nine and 10 extra games really kind of showed and they grew a lot throughout the year. They were the only varsity team in the fall that did not qualify. The varsity field hockey team, for the first time in many years, qualified for sectionals. They were in a matchup where they had to go at Sydney and play on Sydney's turf and it was a very tough match and they lost 2 to 1 at Sydney. But, I mean, they qualified, which, you know, you have to have a certain record to qualify, so that was a good achievement for them. Varsity girls soccer team qualified for the second year in a row. They had all the way to Newark Valley and the first initial update was, we're up 1-0, which, you know, that's always good in soccer. Sometimes you can hold a 1-0 lead. Unfortunately, the girls weren't able to this year. We lost 6 to 1 in that game, but we started off up 1-0. The varsity volleyball team had a great fall. They had an overall record of 12 and 4, had a shot, they were in the MAC semifinals. We lost in the 2-3 game and eventually finished third overall in league play. We earned a home sectional game, we're the four seed, we played five Lansing. So Lansing had to come all the way to us and unfortunately, we lost in that match. But we were in the 4-5 game. Varsity boys soccer team earned a home sectional game for the second year in a row. We're in that 8-9 matchup, where we're being the eight seed, they're the nine. You get a nice home game, but, which we won 3 to 0, played very well. And then you eventually go see the one seed, which our boys soccer team over the years has done a ton. Well, it was the most competitive we've ever done. We scored one early and I was actually assisting, I was on the sideline. We tried to hold on to that 1-0 lead with about five, six minutes left. Seton Catholic, who was the one seed, tied it up. And we eventually went to a shootout, which unfortunately, that's how we end in soccer after 110 minutes and Seton Catholic emerged in the shootout. So as you can see, we had a, you know, highly competitive fall, both on the field and in the classroom. So I'm very proud of all our coaches, student athletes, all our teachers, you know, it was a great fall. Believe it or not, the winter season is off and as some of you saw me last week, there was not much sleep to be had. We had our opening tip-off tournament, which I was here three of the four nights until after 9:30. So our boys and girls basketball teams competed in that tournament. Monday, Wednesday, our JV and varsity boys played in the tournament. Both of them won the tournament, so we won our opening tip-off tournament. Our varsity boys basketball team actually got the opportunity, and it's an application process, to get in the STOP DWS tournament. We applied for that last June and based on our record and who was coming back, we got in it. It was Seton Catholic, us, who played in the first round game Friday night. And the other side was Chittinango and Union Endicott. Yes, thank you. So very, very competitive teams. Opening night, we lost to Seton Catholic, played a hard-fought game, Seton's a very good team. They ended up winning our bracket by five points, I believe, Alex?
Yeah.
You taking notes back there? I should have had you do this part. So, and Saturday night, we played Union Endicott, which I'm sure, as you all know, is a much bigger school than us. But we beat them, you know, it was a, it was a great game, so, and it was a great tournament. So our boys basketball actually played four games last week. They played Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and Saturday. Our girls JV and varsity basketball teams played in our home tip-off tournament Tuesday, Thursday. And Thursday night, unfortunately, Deposit Hancock beat both our JV and our varsity girls in the championship game. We came in second. The nice thing with the way our schedule sets up is they're competing right now to hopefully get back at them. So we had our league game with Deposit Hancock tonight. So the girls played in Deposit. So, and the wrestlers, they went up to Morseville Eaton, they played, I'm familiar with the section three folks, that's where I'm, you know, they played some very big schools out of Syracuse, some pretty big mergers up there when you go West Hill, CBA, you know, some of these schools are, so we got some very good competition up there. VVS, we competed against this weekend, so, I mean, the wrestling world is a different tournament every weekend and duel meets and so they're off and running as well. So modified kids started practice a week and a half ago, so things are busy. I was, I was telling a couple of people, last week is the busiest week of my whole year for that basketball tournament.
And you also have some new uniforms coming for the boys and girls?
Yes, boys and girls uniforms. Hops are here, the shorts are still in Nike shipment coming. So, yeah, they are, they are very nice. I'm very impressed with the product. The timeline has been frustrating. We hope to have them here by the start of the tournament, but I think by the end of this week, we'll have them in hand. So we have our jerseys for both, but we don't have the shorts because they're done separately. It's the way Nike does stuff, I guess. So that is, in a quick, brief synopsis, what's been going on in the sports world the last four months or so.
Well, that's impressive, how many students, you know.
And it's been hitting, like, they came to me, a lot of the ADs, like, two, three years ago, like, they track our numbers and actually, one of the former superintendents really kind of said, "What do you guys do differently at Walton? Everybody else's numbers keep dwindling and you guys are..." And the only thing I could think to say to them was, "I really think our youth programs do a nice job of making it fun and not about so much competition." And what I'm hearing from other communities, that they're pushing the win-lose and play the best at all class at earlier ages. And we really give every kid the opportunities until it gets to the higher levels. And I think that has a lot to do with it because we're not pushing away kids too early.
I was going to say, Coach Richardson and myself, with the Booster Club basketball, we have the five and six-year-olds. We're going to have to run two teams no matter what. There's 24 kids on the court and, you know, the playroom is at Townsend School. We're very organized for that hour, I'll tell you, because we have to be.
Absolutely. The numbers in the Booster Club are really doing well. My hat's off to everybody that's running the Booster Club, the McGivens. Another point I want to make is, I got a lot of feedback from the community members on how they, how impressed they were that Walton had such a presence at the away games. The Walton community really is rallying around these very successful and highly talented sports teams and it shows. I mean, there's, we're getting a lot of positive feedback on the student support of our athletes outside when they travel. Binghamton's a long ways to go for a lot of people and they said that was very well-attended in that tournament. So that's, that's a great thing, that support's necessary.
I'd almost say Saturday night, we probably had more people in that arena from Walton than we did from Endicott.
Yeah, that's impressive.
That's nice.
It was a great opportunity.
How's your other job going?
Oh, middle school principal. You want an update on that? Another night.
Alright, alright. Those two lines down.
Thank you, Andy. Okay, we have another presentation, technology, smart boards, bonds, and VoIP.
So before, Rick's going to give, our director of technology will be giving the presentation on this. But I just wanted to remind you that the money that we got was from the Smart Bonds Act, which passed in 2014, which was the, it was state money. So everything that we're doing is funded by the state. And Rick will get more into detail about what we've done so far, but I know he's done a great job. We spent money on Chromebooks, the ProWise boards, which Rick will explain, a lot in classroom technology, our VoIP phones, which will be installed hopefully, Rick, the end of this month, right? So we're not using the phone they had today. The security, the cameras, the keyless entries will all be installed because of, because of that money. Okay, Rick?
You just went over everything I was covering.
Yeah, but you can go in more detail, though.
We'll give you a brief update of what, kind of where we're at and where we're going with the smart schools. Since September, we've put over 350 Chromebooks into classrooms. Half of those have gone to Townsend with Mike Snyder. The other half split up between middle school and high school. So the nice thing is over at Townsend, we're up to like 10 to 15 devices per classrooms, per full classroom. The partial classrooms have three to five devices. Over here, we're up to 14 Chromebook carts, which three years ago, I think we had four. So we're making progress there. We've also... We've also, Mr. Cluff mentioned twenty ProWise boards. We've remodeled twenty of our classrooms here, our smart classrooms, with the new ProWise boards. Basically, we've replaced projectors and a smart board with one item, it's basically a touchscreen TV. In the long run, it's more cost-effective, the kids can see it clearer, it's more functional, it's just all around, it's, it's a great board, it's a great product. Also, we've created a new Mac lab at the high school, all new IMAX. We've also taken a cluster of those Macs and put them at Townsend for the younger children. And the nice thing about these Macs is we actually created what's called the dual boot system. You can either boot the computer in a Windows operating system or an Apple, so a child can sit down to this Apple product and if they're not familiar with it, they can do a keystroke and boot it into a Windows ten PC and sit there and use it just like the kid next to them is. So it's, it's a, it's a great product also. That moves us into voiceover internet, which we've been working on this product for, project for about two years, I'd say. Pretty much every decision we've made, network-wise and infrastructure-wise, was geared towards implementing this replacement phone system. So, long story short, we're working with Finger Lakes Technology. They're doing a lot of stuff in the backend and we're doing a lot of the wiring and servers in-house. They'll show up here on the eighteenth and start what they have to do. The nineteenth and twentieth, we'll be doing training for the staff. We'll be doing a live cut-over from the analog system to the VoIP system at three-fifteen that day. From that point on, it'll be pretty much a live system and we'll be working out the kinks as we go. So we'll be on the VoIP system the twenty-first with children here in classes, running full speed, I guess, so it's gonna be a live situation. It's gonna be tricky, but I think we'll get through it. The twenty-second, I'll be here with Finger Lakes, working out any further kinks. That moves us to day automation, which is, we hired them to enhance our security features around the school. They'll be increasing our door security with an entry control system. You'll have to swipe with your badge or your, what is it, a key fob? And that'll allow you entry into the school. Also, we're adding a whole new camera system, which combines both Townsend and the high school. Currently, they're two separate systems. Townsend's is an IP-based system and this is actually an analog system, so the high school administrators can't even log into the Townsend system and the Townsend administrators can't log into the high school. This will be one system with all new cameras, with one software where you can log in at school or at home. And that's pretty much the finished part of our first phase of the project. And then after that, we have to go through the whole process again.
Rick, I have a couple of questions. With the smart boards, with new technology in general, are we providing adequate training to the staff to utilize?
There's only one teacher that I'm aware of that received the smart board, the ProWise board without training and that's someone who's as literate with, with technology as I am. So, pretty much everyone to get a board needs to go through the training. We covered everyone at Townsend. There's been a few glitches, I mean, it's a different product, but with the training and Crystal Trask actually provides, she'll show up to your classroom, or I will, Cindy Baker over at Townsend, so, yes, we provide training before we put the new technology in the classroom. They're not even allowed to receive the board if we don't think they can handle it. And that's how it's been done for the last six months.
Good, good. Now, does Boise's have the VoIP phone system, DCMO?
DCMO has, what's a hybrid right now. They're currently partially IP, but they're still mostly analog. So when their phone system goes down, which it always goes down, that's not, it's not due to internet-related issues or VoIP. That's an analog issue and that's been going on there for as long as I can remember. If you remember, I was employed there, same issues happened five years ago.
Okay, so could, if the internet goes down here, will we still have phone?
Yes. Currently, what we have going on, we just installed the last analog line in Mr. Cluff's office. Every office, their fax line, their fax lines will remain copper, which means analog. So what we'll end up doing is hooking up a phone to say the copier, because most, most fax lines are hooked up to a, a big district copier. We'll have a phone that's piggybacked off of that copier, so if the phone ever go down, the, the VoIP phones ever go down, you'll still have the copper lines and that's one per office. So there'll be one in Mike's, there'll be one at the district office, there'll be one at Mr. Knuwski's, one at the middle school, there's one at the bus garage. Also, all the fire alarms are staying analog. We can't take a chance of those going down. And the nice thing about this project is we've, we found so many problems in the current phone system. Today, we fixed an issue at Townsend where, I guess code is every fire alarm is supposed to have a backup phone line going to it, so if the first phone goes down, you can still dial out to say there's a fire here. Townsend only had one, one line going into the fire alarm. It was then looped around to the second line and then, so that the alarm didn't go off, but, you know, that's, that's not right. Also, here at the high school, the second line was piggybacked off of the guidance office's phone, fax phone, which is another issue. One of the bigger finds we actually found was, for thirty-five years, we've been paying a hundred and eighty dollars for four lines we've never used. So, I think I calculated it one time, it's like forty-eight thousand dollars we've wasted because nobody looked at these phone numbers, what's going on with them. So, we're finding things. The bus garage was a, was a, was a major problem because they're not actually on our network. A lot of people don't know, but there's a fiber line running between this school and Townsend, which allows our net, allows us to be on the same network, phone-wise and internet-wise. The bus garage is kind of over there on its own. It's always, it's never been on our network, never able to share files, network files, stuff like that. So we've worked around that, we've figured out a way that they tunnel now back here, the, the speeds are good, so it should work over there. Have our fingers crossed, but I'm confident it will.
Okay. One other thing, you had mentioned ID cards to swipe into the building?
Yes.
Or key fobs. How, like, I can understand that the, the ID card will act as a security thing, so once they're in the building, they can still show proof of who they are. I'm thinking like a key fob is a regular, like, car-type fob. There's no ID attached to that, so if that was lost and someone found that and knew that it, you know, that the school district was using that, is there any other backup security to that?
Can I answer that? So the key fobs are only gonna be given to administration or certain individuals, not, all teachers will not have that, they'll have their badge.
Okay.
So that's not the concern. So if someone loses their badge, of course, they have to report it to technology that they lost or, or the fob, but they, not everybody will have that because exactly what you just said.
Yeah, because I was thinking, wow, you know, at least with the ID, you could kind of visually see, okay, hey, that's not who you are, but...
Ninety-five percent of everyone is going to be getting the badge. Actually, they already have them. The badge is already used for our printing. For, for a teacher or staff member to print currently, they have to swipe to receive their prints. That same badge is going to be used for the door entry system. Administrators are the only ones who have fobs and I think I've only given out less than twenty. The nice thing about all of this is it's controlled right in-house, so if something's lost, they need to let us know immediately and then I can deactivate it and we hand out a new card.
Okay, good.
So it should be controlled rather well.
So I just, you know, I want to say, when, a few years ago, was it this your third year as a director, or two years? Two years. When we brought the position forward to the board, and Rick can probably talk more about this, but you hear us talking about all these things that we've done for district and, you know, that if we didn't have a technology director leading the people that we have and the support of that, these projects and things probably couldn't have got done. And we sat down three years ago, had a committee, a tech committee, and, you know, we put the plan together to, to do all these things and there's still a lot more that has to get done, but it, the things that are getting done are, are probably things that should have been done ten years ago or five years ago.
It should have done. The nice thing now is we have a really good foundation that we can start building on. We can add stuff and not worry about the network not working and the children not being able to access, you know, get online, so we're ready to take off.
Our technicians are great, if, you know, if there's issues in the classroom, they're there, so we have that support. We have Crystal for PD support and she also acts a little bit as a technician, but we're fortunate to have the support that we have, you know, for our staff, so.
Things are going well.
Good. Does anybody else have any questions?
Thanks, Rick.
Thank you. Additions to the agenda?
We have several. We have three additional consent items. One would be added to item eight E, it's an additional substitute, a long-term substitute And then we have item eight G, which is a resignation and separation from a teacher aide, and that would become item eight G. And item eight H is appointing an impartial hearing officer for an expedited hearing. And that one is actually just a confirmation of the appointment you accrued yesterday. And I do want to also point out, for a teacher, Mrs. Reinhardt, we have moved her appointment from tomorrow to an emergency appointment on November sixteenth, was, which was the day of her certification. And she is currently a long-term sub in that classroom.
All right, so do we have any questions, comments on the consent agenda?
Move it with these other ones in.
I will have to change the motion.
That's second, but it's not.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And just to clarify, the revenue and expenditure reports, they were not in the packet, but as soon as they are available, we will get them before the next board meeting. All right, let me get caught up here. Okay, so we are up to new business. We have a couple of donations that have come forward. A hundred and fifty dollars from Michael Hammerslag, am I saying that right? In memory of Larry Regus, for a scholarship to be established, as well as an anticipated donation of four hundred dollars from the Farm Credit East Cobleskill branch to the Walton FFA. That is very nice. Do we have a motion to extend? Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. All right, and we're, we have the personal appointment. Do you want to touch base on this? This is a, a teacher for the science position?
So you know that we, we've had the opening since July first for the science position. I know that Mr. Knuwski and the science department worked very hard trying to recruit a teacher. They did several rounds of interviews during the summer, several in the fall, and we were very fortunate to, to find a science teacher of, of this person's caliber, so they all agreed on the individual. I had a great interview with him. He's actually, he lives in New Jersey, but certified in New York State, taught actually in New York City, and he's moving here to Walton. I think after the, well, I think he's, he's looking for an apartment now, but will be here after the first of the year to start, it's, earth science, teach earth science at the high school. So we're excited about having him. He comes with a lot of great qualifications, good recommendations, so I'm pleased and I know Mr. Knuwski and the committee was very pleased to, to find him and that he applied here. So he wants to get out of the city life, come up to sort of a rural life, so hopefully it'll be a good fit for us.
I said biology and earth science.
Yes, he's certified in biology and earth science, right, so.
Any comments, concerns? Do I have a motion to approve personal appointment?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Okay, old business, we have no old business. We are up to policy update. Does somebody want to give us the policies?
Yeah, I'll take that. The policy committee actually met this evening at five o'clock. His attendance was Grayden, Kevin, Roger and Tim McGuire, our business manager, so welcome to him. We reviewed two policies this evening, the business investments policy and policy number thirty-two ten, we approved that as written, no revisions to that. And then, policy eighty-five oh five, support services, policy pertaining to charging school meals, again, presented, we recommend it move forward as presented to us, no revisions to that policy.
Okay.
And I just, I want to thank the policy committee for pushing that policy back, you know, giving the, giving the administrators a chance to look at that and putting some input into that, so thank you. Appreciate it. Makes their job easier, too.
Yeah, for everybody's information, when we do that, it's actually easier all the way around because they take out those cross-references that would have you updating your policies non-stop. They did an excellent job to make sure that these policies, once they're passed, they reference the proper laws and then you don't have to change a policy to be reactionary, so did an excellent job with that. They cleaned it up very nice after the last round we saw.
Absolutely.
All right, do we have a motion to approve the policy at first reading of thirty-two ten, investments and eighty-five oh five, charging school meals?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
I'd second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We are up to administrative remarks.
Okay. Well, first of all, I want to officially welcome our new business manager, Tim McGuire. And as Paul said, he was at his first policy meeting and helped us with some policies. Tim came right before Thanksgiving break and settling in, so I haven't really bothered, I don't think any of the administrators have bothered him too much. I think he's a little overwhelmed just to get things settled, but I think it's a great, a great, I'm glad you're here and I think he's gonna be a great asset to the district. He did ask, if he has to come to board meetings, I said, "Yes, Tim, I need you at the board meeting," so. But welcome, though. I'm glad you're here with us, so thank you. The next thing, I just want to talk to you, a couple of things, and I'm hoping that you're looking at those superintendent messages. We're putting those all out. Actually, I have Willow is out. She's out in the audience, one of the stars of the holiday video. We had over a thousand hits on that, so it was all over.
You're doing better than our meetings.
I am, yes, I know. I've just got a couple of hits on you.
Now, is that hits or likes? Which one are we doing?
It's hits.
Is that?
Yeah.
That's hits, not Facebook likes?
No, actually, people clicking, watching it, so. So we, we did one with the holiday lights with a couple, with Romeo and Willow, and then we did, the next one will be released tomorrow, so please catch it, if you, if you have time. It's with the drama production that's going on this weekend and, what's the name of it?
Oh, you had to ask.
What is it?
Register here.
Right. So I interviewed three students on that. I won't tell you who they are, so don't be surprised. They did a great job, so if you can watch that, that'd be great, too.
Friday and Saturday.
It's Friday and Saturday, seven o'clock, that'll start, so if you can make it, they would love to have you there. And then, Thursday night, don't forget, is the holiday lighting of the school. And I don't have, you got the postcards, I don't, I don't think I have to talk about that, I've talked about that a lot, so everybody knows that's gonna happen. I wanted to inform you that the Travel Club has changed their plans due to the storm in Puerto Rico this fall. They actually were, were trying to do different trips. They tried Costa Rica.
Costa Rica, Panama.
That didn't work. Now they're going to Panama, that's, I think that's where they're, they're going to go. Stephanie is going to confirm that in the next month or so, so I'll, I'll let you know about that. So unfortunately, the trip to Puerto Rico because of the storm, they won't be able to go, but I'm glad she's, she's gonna find another place to go to bring the kids, so, which is great. I just wanted to update you, we had 21 applicants for the director of curriculum that closed last Friday. So, we'll be going through those and I'll keep you updated. Our plan is hopefully to go through those, form our committee, start interviewing after the first of the year, and then going forth with that. I also want you to know, I met with Michelle on Sunday. We, we did some work on some grants and things. So, she's here, she was here actually the day, no surprise, Michelle, the day after Thanksgiving, working. And then she met Sunday so we could catch up on things. I have a couple more dates that I'll be meeting with her on the weekends. And she's doing well. She wanted me to express to everyone hello and she misses everyone, so... And that was it that I had.
All right. I noticed on the website that the librarian was awarded a grant.
Yeah.
Elementary, yep.
Yes.
And then, we have six students that are gonna be in the Nutcracker?
Yes.
And that, that's in Oniana, right?
That's this weekend, yes, Friday and Sat-. That's also Friday and Saturday, yes. Actually, Mr. Gates' daughter is in Nutcrack.
I'm living in Nutcrack.
And then the other thing I noticed on there that I thought was really neat was the, let's talk turkey. They raised nearly $500 to go to replenishing the food bank during the holiday season. So, I thought that was really neat.
Right.
Good.
And we had our trip to SUNY Broome last, or was, where did we go to that?
Last Thursday.
Last Thursday. We had 29 students attend. We actually had a, had a really good turnout. They toured the campus. Mr. Knooski and I went up with them. They got to talk to some kids, went to the library, talked about the coursework. So, I'm still having that conversation with them. We're, I know Mr. Knooski, you're gonna have a meeting sometime in January to see interest in this.
But, you're gonna meet with the parents after that.
Right. So, I'll, I'll bring that information back to you. But, it was, you know, I'm, I'm just glad that I can get kids to go to the campus, just to see the campus and walk around it, just experience it, so...
And that was a nice day, wasn't it?
It was a little, it was a beautiful day. I loved the chili, but it was nice.
Good. Okay, so things are going well? So far?
Now that Noah's here.
Right?
He doesn't know. He doesn't know yet.
All right, so...
So, you're out of meetings every night throughout the week? Between here and there?